Evening, everyone. This is Laura Schiffer. I'm Chairman of the Planning Board and calling this meeting to order of December 18th at 6:30 PM. We have a roll call vote, please.
Carol Hopst is present.
Andrew Shepherd present.
Laura Schiffer in present. So we do have a quorum, just missing two. Would you join in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
My gift to the United States of America into the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
I want to thank all of our veterans and all of our military currently serving and all the first responders around the world. I know that a lot of people from this country have gone overseas to help others, and I think it's very admirable that they have done that, and we hope God blesses them. This meeting, as you know, is being recorded and will be on the YouTube channel. It will be uploaded at a later date. 1.4 Chairman's additions or deletions. I will be moving to the next meeting, the review of the minutes of 11/27/23. They're not quite complete yet, so we'll move that to January 8th if everybody's okay with that. And also, another change of the agenda, 3.4 and 3.5, our review of the regulations 175-13 and 175-45. We have gotten response from our town council, Adam, and it was brought to our attention that any change in the regulations, we can't just vote on here, but they do have to go to town meeting, which means that they will also be going to a public hearing. So we will have to review those. That'll be moved to the January 8th meeting as well. Were you saying something, Beth?
I just wanted to say that the regulations, changes to regulations don't go to town meeting, but they do have to have a public hearing. So similar to that, but eventually after the public hearing, the planning board votes, you know, looks at the comments, if any, and then votes.
Okay, well, that makes sense.
Okay. So January 8th.
Yeah, so January 8th, and then we do have, I do want to have it as part of the record for, again, if it pleases the board, to add, you can add it as 3.7 if you will, but the 22 Main Street was due to give us a report by November 30th. That did not happen. And in the meantime, there's been some stuff done there that is not per the original plan or permit. So just appraising the board that the Building Inspector's Office and Conservation Commission agent has sent letters to the owner. So that will be on our January 8th meeting agenda. And that's all the changes that I have. So we have some time before the 6:45 public hearing, which Carol will handle for me, and I appreciate that, Carol.
Okay.
And so, Andrew, can we go to 3.1, the announcements and communication?
Absolutely, absolutely. This is from the town of Shirley, zoning board of appeals. There will be a public hearing at 7:00 PM on Monday, January 8th at the town office building. Application submitted by Gerald and Kathleen DeRoche of 78 Little Turnpike Road in Shirley, requesting a public hearing for a special permit per protective zoning bylaws. Something about accessory buildings, accessory buildings in the side or rear yards. The applicant would like to build a 12-by-24 garage slash shed in the front of the property. The parcel is located at 78 Little Turnpike Road in Shirley. Next is from the Groton Zoning Board of Appeals. This is a public notice. The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, January 3rd, 2024, at 6:30 PM at Groton Town Hall, the second floor meeting room. This will be to convene a hearing for the application of Claudine P. De Souza, 270 Lawrence Street, Unit 20 Lowell, Mass., for a petition for a special permit to build a bump out in the front entry on Lot 133-3980 Forge Village Road in Groton. This is a notice of decision from Pepperell. The applicant is Melissa Robbins on behalf of Green 1A Investments. Property location is 23 Mill Street. Owner of the property is Green 1A Investments. It's a special permit that was granted. There's no details on this notice about what the nature of that was. And there's a secondary notice of decision on the same similar matter that was granted with no details on what it was. We still have a little bit of time.
We do. So we can look at, I don't know if you guys have looked at it yet, but the meeting schedule for 2024. I did print that out. But I didn't have the 2024 calendar. Did anybody have any comments on it? That Beth had sent us her proposed calendar?
I think there's one date in February that I won't be there, but I'm going to attempt to be remote if I can.
Okay, and I mean, it'll be the same for me. Because I'm generally going to try to not be in town mid-month. So, but what I've been doing most of the time this past year is either remote or I leave the next day after the meeting. Oh, wait, I've got it. I had it. I printed it off on the plot. So, and I did just what I do with my calendar now. All right. So Beth, let me just ask you, they look like they're first and third Monday.
Yep, second and fourth usually. Yeah, second and fourth typically. And I did look at the holiday schedule that the Board of Selectmen uses. Stayed away from the holidays.
Okay. All right. Anybody else have any comments on that?
No, I was good with it. I mean, I don't know all the way out, but basically, and you know, I get the Zoom meetings set up, and it's very easy to change them if you can.
Yeah, we can just, if something comes up, you know, we can discuss it at a meeting or two before, if you guys know ahead of time.
Okay.
So nothing's etched in stone. So yeah, we are Oh, Beth, do you have updates for us?
Yeah, I have an administrative report here. So for applications, the request for certificate of completion is still pending for 27 Skales Lane. We haven't received any update yet in terms of documentation. The board is waiting for more information as far as revised and as-built plans and and the narrative that was requested. As far as open Campbell Farm Open Space Preservation Development Stormwater Permit, that has been issued, signed, and it's all set administratively, except for we are waiting for the proof of recording. I'm just going to follow up on that with Dana, but everything is done administratively. For interdepartmental approvals for the building department, we signed off for 38 Dudley Road detached garage carport kit, 22-by-24, 8 Peter J. Drive for the installation of a ground-mounted solar system, 40 pounds, 15 kilowatt DC electrical trench is required for 31 Walnut Street, a two-car garage with a master bathroom above. For site visits and compliance, some active projects, 66 Bayberry Hill Road. All documents have been recorded. Project is ready from the administrative perspective, and we'll just wait to hear for the pre-construction scheduling from the current holder. 98 to 100 West Meadow Road, earth disturbing activity was noted. A letter was sent to the owner from Land Use, and we are waiting for that information from the owner. 22 Main Street, Best Friends Veterinary Clinic, project modification was noted. The owner has been notified of required action via a letter sent from Land Use and from the building department. 22 West Meadow Road, Lockbrook Solar Array, earth disturbing activity and tree removal was observed on the perimeter of the parcel. Owner has been notified of required action via a letter sent from the Land Use Department. 25 Harbor Trace Stormwater Management Permit is current with monthly reports. Green Wheeler Road Stormwater Management Permit is current with their monthly reports. 5 Turnpike Road Stormwater Management Permit, all documents have been recorded. Project is administratively ready, but it was noted that site work on the stormwater management system has begun, so we are waiting for the scheduling of the pre-construction meeting. Miscellaneous, I sent the Planning Board Regulation Review of 175-13 that you worked on in your November 27th meeting into town council for review, and he did quite a bit of markup and commenting, so that's all in your folders, and I did print it out for you. I'm working on setting up a public hearing for these regulation changes that the board has been working on so far. And again, we can work on the date. I'm planning on sending the Scenic Roads Act and the ground-mounted solar bylaw that were also discussed on November 27th to town council. I've been doing this during office hours, so each time I'll meet with him and I'll send him, you know, the new work that was done, and he'll review it and send it back. I also, at the last town council office hours, did ask him to write up options to stormwater easement regulations, 175-45, and asked him about alternatives to courting an easement, which needs to be approved by a town meeting vote. So we're looking at that change coming down. So CPTC Fall Workshops are still going on. There's four of them left. The MBTA Communities, there recently was a planning meeting last week with a number of staff, with a great turnout, two representatives from MRPC and spent over an hour working on the bylaw. A lot of good input, a lot of good back and forth, a lot of good discussion. So we added in affordable housing component. And right now, it's back in MRPC's hands. They're editing the bylaw, and we expect to see that soon. So the MEP Action Grant EOI has been submitted. We talked about that last meeting. And I did get the update. Unfortunately, the March service has not gotten a lot of ridership. Very low. So yeah, I think there's been three riders. I think that's my report.
Thank you.
Is that regular? Is that regular or one time?
Like three in August, and then that's it, zero in February, zero October, zero in November.
I wondered about that. That's too bad, but the only way you can tell is by trying. Publicized. Robert? We're coming. We see that you're here. And let's see, we are at 6:47. So I'm going to ask Carol to take over for the public hearing 2.1. Thank you, Carol.
Okay. I'd like to open the public hearing for 108 West Meadow Road for the Seated Roads Act. This is December 18th, 2023, and I guess I'd like to introduce the board members.
Robert Tharian, Andrew Shepherd.
Carol Hopst.
And Laura Schiffer in here. It's a roll call vote for the board. Yep, yep, that's mine.
And also, there's a public sign-in sheet. Is there a signed sheet on the table? So you'd have a chance to sign in the sheet. And who was ever online for the public hearing? I see it's Jessica, and I'm not sure who Phil is.
I think Phil is.
He's the applicant. Okay. And do we have anyone else online?
I don't see anybody else online, but we do have to see people when they speak. So when Phil is asked to speak as the applicant, he'll have to unmute and also
Show his visible?
Yeah, he has to be visible.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
You can't see me?
No.
How do I do that?
Don't ask me. I'm technically challenged.
My fellow movie camera?
Phil, if you have a start video at the bottom of your, oh, you did it. Okay, thank you.
I see him now. How about that?
Evening.
Okay, good evening. I guess the next thing I got to do is read the legal ad for the record. Okay, the legal notice, in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 15(c), Scenic Roads Townsend General Bylaws, Chapter 106, and Planning Board Rules and Regulations, Article 4, Chapter of Section 175, 31-34. Hearings under the Scenic Roads Act, the Townsend Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, December 18th, at 6:45 PM in Selectmen Chambers, 272 Main Street regarding an application from Dason LLC for removal of a 25-foot section of a stone wall for a driveway entrance at 108 West Meadow Road, 420-3. Alternatively, the public may access the meeting electronically while at the following link. Parties wishing to speak in support of or in opposition to this application may do so at the hearing or in writing prior to the hearing. Copies of this application are available for review at Town Hall during business hours. Laura Schiffer in Chair Planning Board, published in the Groton Herald on December 1st, 2023, and December 8th, 2023. Do I have to read the rest of it? Okay. And Beth, what does it mean by explain the order of business?
Oh, you can just explain how the public hearing pretty much goes. What you're going to do on the guidelines.
Okay, so we're going to have the applicant will present their proposal, and the board will review their plans against the town rules and regulations and the bylaws. And then there'll be questions and our comments from the board members. And they will read mandatory referral comments into the record. And any written correspondence or see from the butters or concerned citizens will be right into the record, and then there'll be time for public questions or comments in support of or in opposition to the proposal. So I guess we could go to the applicant. Now, would you like to go ahead and present your proposal?
Sure, just looking to, well, it's already been done, actually, if anybody's driven up there, as we removed the 25-foot wall for the access to the single-family house. I guess that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess it was my attention after the fact we moved the wall, so I apologize for that, if I have to apologize for it.
Can we hear from Jessica? Carol?
Jessica? Do you have comments?
Yeah, hello. You guys hear me? Okay. Oh, yes, great. Hello. Getting off the no-power high. Oh, my goodness. Yep, yeah, so we had just driven up West Meadow Road, and there were some disturbance to the lots up there for the residential development. So we had reached out to Phil previously in November-ish, just making him aware of the rules and regulations under the Scenic Roads Act, and also at the same time with the stormwater bylaw and regulations for the disturbance. So Phil did submit a retroactive filing for the scenic roads for the destruction of the stone wall. And I guess, if you don't mind me asking, Phil, was there any, to your knowledge, was there any tree clearing, tree cutting completed within the right-of-way of West Meadow Road as well for these projects, or specifically for 108?
Specifically for, so I think some might know that this was going to be a larger project in 2018. It was like a longer Lockbrook Run project. We had plans on doing that project. Then times have changed and things shifted. We just did single lots. So we originally cleared all the trees on 112 West Meadow when we got approval to do all that, and then we just kind of let it sit stagnant and change it up to three lots. So yes, the trees were cut in 2018.
Okay, so I would have the board consider that while you're reviewing this application tonight. The Scenic Roads Act does give the planning board the authority for review of stone wall removal or destruction as well as tree cutting and clearing within the right-of-way of a designated scenic road.
If I may, Beth, can you, I mean, I remember Lockbrook coming back to us. I think it was during COVID. But Lockbrook had their permits extended by the planning board. I want to say. Pardon me?
I was so sorry I was here.
Okay, well, it was. And I'm thinking that it was done more than once. The extension, because they're good for two years. Is that right?
I don't know what permits you're talking about, actually. Is it a special permit or a subdivision control or subdivision approval?
It was a subdivision. As Phil stated, they cleared at 112 because they were going to just use that one entrance originally, correct? Is that right, Phil?
No, there was always three entrances in the 112. The parcel, the land was called 112 West Meadow. Lockbrook Run had three entrances along West Meadow. And I believe that was '06 it was designed and planned, and then I bought it in 2018 with the extensions for like two or three years. Different permits had different extensions.
Yeah.
So I was gung-ho to go do it, and then just looking at a lot of finances, and the market wasn't that strong at the time. We just kind of let it sit.
And then needed the A and R, right, Phil?
Yeah.
That was not too long ago, right?
That was, I believe, in March.
March. So the A and R lots were in our three lots, rebuilding lots.
Correct.
Figure out, Beth, where or when we should have, as a planning board, just going through all these rules, regulations, bylaws, whatever, and trying to figure out at what point does the applicant know what he is supposed to do or she has to do in what order? So I don't remember at the hearings that we had or the meetings that we had where the exceptions were granted any discussion about scenic road. And you weren't here, so okay, and neither was Jessica.
Well, ideally, when a building permit is filed, I would venture to say that would be the building commissioner would identify, you know, the lot and know whether there were stone walls and trees in the public way. Right now, it happens to coincide with the application for the driveway permit, which puts it into the highway superintendent's first catch, if you will, which is a little spread out. Now, with PermaLink and online permitting, it's possible that we could put it into that old building permit application. So it's a check-a-box, if you will, where everybody reviews it before the building permit is issued, which I think is the best plan myself personally, but it has to be flushed out a little more with staff.
Okay, so if we would we have to now have the planning board do a site visit? Should we have any recommendations? Or have, I guess, Carol, when do you do the the referral comments on your list? When is that next?
After the board reviews the plan to get any questions, it's like third down on the list of referral comments.
You can take it out of order.
I can take it out of order. Okay. Okay, see, this is the referral comments on the sheet here. Okay, so 108 West Meadow Road referral comments. This is to be right into the record. The stone wall trees have already been removed. Going forward, the applicant must first file an application with the planning board before the removal of any trees or stone walls. Driveway permits must be approved before any work begins. Signed, Jake Smith, Highway Superintendent. The next one is, please review land disturbance thresholds in either Chapter 85 or Section 175 to determine if a stormwater manager permit is necessary for this property. That's from Jessica Consavo, Land Use Coordinator. And the next one is, the select board trusts the planning board to make the proper decision. We appreciate all your efforts. Signed, Charles Sexton-Duradian Chair. Conservation Commission return with no comment, and the Board of Health return with no comment. So has the application been filed?
Yeah, that's in the packet.
That's the, that's the, yeah, that's the application. I saw that. I did see that. Did you see that? So we're good with that. So does the board have any comments or concerns or?
I have a question.
I have a question.
A question? Go for it.
Sure.
Oh, you asked.
Uh, Mr. Clemento? Are you the owner of this house?
Yes.
Do you have any other questions, concerns, comments?
Well, it seems like there was some confusion with the developer and the owner.
Yeah.
So he's in a tough spot.
I mean, it's already.
He's the developer as well. He's both the developer and the owner at this point. This will be up for sale, right, Phil?
Did the, did the, did the owner pull the building permit?
Mr. Clemento is the owner. You can ask him, yeah?
Were you the one that pulled the building permit, Mr.?
Colometta, yes. Yeah, I own the property. I'm building the house, 108.
You're building the house now?
Yes, currently.
And you applied for a building permit?
Building permit's been in my hands since March.
And you weren't advised of disinformation at that time?
No, until we, so we built 110 and 110 had a, had always had a like cart path going. It was like basically in the middle of the parcel that I bought at 112. And we put a driveway in there and we'd got the three A and R lots in, in March, put the driveway in there, go to sign, get that one signed off and sold, and that triggered a discussion or a driveway permit or application down at the highway department. And this is what this all triggered and came about. So I'm kind of getting in the rear, like catching in the rears and trying to do what I need to do now. But in the meantime, when we did 110 and that was being sold, 108, the, the, the stone wall on 108 was, was moved over. So it kind of was all done. So 110, we never, we didn't move any wall. 108, we moved because we, um, started on that one. And then the paperwork started.
So I'm not confident that we as a board or town, I guess, have, uh, thorough enough or that the information was available to fill early enough or that he had a firm understanding?
Yeah, I agree that maybe we're not very clear on the streets, you know, moving stone walls.
If there was forms to fill out when we were applying for the building permit or if someone told me to go down to the highway department and do this and then triggered back to this step, I would have absolutely done it. It's not my nature to do anything in the roundabout way.
In the future, Phil, now that you know, if, uh, would you apply, will you plan to apply for this permit?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, I guess to Jessica's comment, though, about if a stormwater management permit is necessary? That, I mean, I don't have any idea on how to answer that question.
On a single family house, I don't believe it's necessary at all. It's one lot, one house. I think it triggers over four.
Okay, yeah, I'm not familiar enough to comment on that part either.
There is one.
In terms of the stone wall, I'm comfortable with everything that's.
Andrew was asking about the stormwater management. I don't know what that is, but he does have the application.
For the removal of the stone wall. Yeah, sure.
And I'm okay with that.
Okay, so Jessica, is that a, if I may, is that, um, accurate or, because we now have that bylaw that the, um, I think it's the conservation agent oversees the minor stormwater and then major goes to planning. So what, what have we got here?
So, let me find the table. Um, so in the planning board regulations, 175 dash 39 is the applicability table for stormwater regulations. And it says here the table is land disturbance activity thresholds for new or redevelopment. Um, and the, let's see, there's a 40,000 square feet to 60,000 square feet of land disturbance for a single family not lot, not an A and R or subdivision within the last five years. That would be considered a minor project. Um, if you are, let's see, if there's an A and R approved in the last five years, um, it would be triggered by exceeding 40,000 square feet of land disturbance. Um, that's for sort of flat terrain. Um, if you do have steep slopes of greater than 15%, um, a stormwater permit gets triggered at 1,000 square feet of disturbance. So, um, it is, you know, the, the burden of proof is on the applicant to, to determine if, if they are within the, any of these thresholds or if they meet any of these thresholds. Um, so this, this table, I believe, was relayed on to the, the applicant, the owner previously. Um, but, you know, we can only determine so much from eyeballing or, or looking at site plans.
So that should have been done, um, either before or after the A and R was approved? I mean, if that was just done by us in March of this year, we would have had that discussion at that time, wouldn't we? I'm asking.
Was that to me?
Anybody?
Yeah, no, I, I think it's, yeah, I mean, I mean, I know planning board does administer a lot of different things in town. Um, and, uh, you know, just going back to something getting triggered at the building permit review, a lot of people, and Phil can probably attest to this just in, in general with his experience, but I think a lot of times, once you submit for your building permit application, you're ready to build. So you've already done all of your site prep and site planning. So, um, a lot of sort of these, these really early on permits with a green site, um, are, are missed or overlooked or it's, you have to, you end up doing retroactive filings. So, um, lesson learned for everybody this one, with this project, so we can just do better moving forward, of course. Um, but yeah, I mean, we don't need to discuss it even more at this point necessarily, but Phil, if you can definitely check over your plans to see if any of this disturbance, um, would trigger um, any permit. I, I don't believe, I can look back again, but I don't think we have like a lot, you know, if it's four lots or greater. I, that might be a state regulation. I don't think necessarily the town follows that as well.
I'll have the engineer look into it. Circle back. I was just communicating with them. He said it was over four lots, but he'll look into the bylaws in Townsend.
Sure. Yeah, it could be the Massachusetts Stormwater Standards, which, which uses the four lots, but, um, I know a lot of the times our regs and bylaws are more stringent than, than what the state goes by.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Thank you, Jessica.
Okay, so we did that. So do we have any? We're all good with the scenic road? The stone wall?
Um, I don't know what to do.
I'm okay with it, I think.
I mean, the stone wall's already removed. Uh, so we did that. Uh, oh, do we have any written, um, correspondence from any butters or concerned citizens? Or it's anybody's not online, right?
I, I think the only final, you know, we're not trying to be a group or a committee that rubber stamps things after something gets installed ahead of time. But I think with this, I think it's relatively new. I think we seem to know that the, the workflows of the permitting is not maybe the most efficient just yet, or there are ways that it can be improved.
It's more hot or on a checklist in the permitting process. Because I don't think it's intuitive that the, that you can't like move some stones to put a driveway through.
Sure, sure.
Without asking, uh, permission. So, so if it's a checkbox on a, uh, somehow going forward, I think that would be very beneficial.
I think every house needs a driveway.
Well, every house needs a driveway.
And, um, it's unfortunate that we have to consider the fact of the technical performance. Um, in terms of the amount of stone walls being removed or was removed was 25 feet. Um, it's not a dramatic impact on a stone wall visually that I can think of. So I don't have a problem, um, helping the owner here and getting this off the table and, um, the, and actually it gives us insight what we have to do on our end here to make it work better.
That sounds good. So I guess the last part of this looks like, do we have any public questions or comments? Is nobody's online from the public? Are you from the public? Um, so can we just say there's no comments from the public?
Exactly. I get that in my news.
Okay, um. So if there's no outstanding issues, I can close the public hearing? Okay, are there any outstanding issues? No.
Do we need to vote to approve or is that?
You can do that. Do you close the public hearing or the board?
Oh, what do you want to do? If you want to vote before, I, we can do either way.
You could do, you could do your vote beforehand if you want, if you're, if you're considering any, you know.
Do you want me to read the decision before we vote or how does that work?
Yeah, if you want to read it, because I'm sure the board members didn't get a chance to.
Okay, this is the decision on the Scenic Road Act. Um, the applicant is Phil Colmetta, DASAM LLC. He's also the owner and the location's 108 West Meadow Road. Uh, the data and we either granted or denied, we'll just vote on that. Uh, the Scenic Roads Act application site plan submitted to Todd Clerk, November 2nd, 2023. Check for fee in about $150 and check for bailing of butters fee of $51. Townsend Planning Board Scenic Road Act application for removal of trees in our stone walls within the towns right away. Hand drawn diagram of driveway entrance, single family building in West Meadow Road. Um, bylaw background, applicable sections of the Planning Board Rules and Regulations, Article 2, Section 175 dash 31 to 34. Applicable sections of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40, Section 15C and Chapter 87, Section 3. Applicable section of the quote of the town, Townsend. Chapter 106 Scenic Roads General Bylaws Proceedings. Uh, the public hearing opened 12/18/23 and uh, and then there's Exhibit A, Certified Butters List. Exhibit C, Legal Notice of Public Hearing. Exhibit D, Mandatory Referrals. Exhibit E, Public Hearing and the Sign and Sheet. And a Statement of Facts. The Planning Board held a duly posted and advertised remote public hearing under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40, Section 15C and Mass General Law, Chapter 87, Section 3. And Townsend zoning bylaws, Chapter 106, on Monday, December 18th at 6:45 PM. The application proposed removal of 25 foot sections of stone wall along a portion of West Meadow Road to allow the owner of the property access for a driveway entrance to a residential dwelling. And da, 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 um. Okay, and then the board voted unanimously to, by roll call vote to approve. Uh, we'll, we'll do, we'll see if we're gonna do that, actually, yeah. So since there's no outstanding issues, we want to do a roll call vote, whether we want to grant the, uh.
Motion to approve the decision as read?
Uh, grant, I guess, if we grant the decision.
Fair enough.
So if you were to just read the motion on page three?
Read the motion on page three.
So you could just like.
Okay, wait, the motion finally. Uh, oh, okay. Andrew, do you want to read?
Sure, I got it.
You got it?
Um, on December 18th, 2023, um, I, Andrew Shepherd, make a motion to grant approval of the scenic road application for the property at 108 West Meadow Road, map four, block 20, lot three, submitted by Phil Colmetta, uh, DASAM LLC to relocate 25 feet of stone wall.
Wait, what, to remove or relocate?
Uh, this is listed as relocate.
Well, you know, I thought just remove is better, right?
We'll do remove.
I'm sorry?
Remove is better.
To remove.
I don't know where the stones went.
Yeah, so I would say remove.
Thank you. Thank you.
Can we edit that?
Yeah, yeah.
She's gonna edit that.
To remove, uh, 25 feet of stone wall.
Second?
Second.
And a roll call vote was taken as follows. Um, Laurie, how do you vote?
Laura Schifrin, yes. And Beth, is this where we could interject? Like I, I have no desire to make him do anything. Uh, so I don't, I'm not asking that he would put any trees back or bushes back or stone back.
That would be in there in no conditions. Yeah.
Yeah.
With no conditions.
Okay. Laura Schifrin, yes.
Carol Hawkesus, yes.
Robert Thering, yes.
Andrew Shepherd, yes?
And then there's another motion below. If you guys want to do that, if you want to designate a signatory for this decision, you can do that.
Are you gonna be around, Laurie, to sign this?
I'm leaving in 15 minutes.
No. Who am I to surround? You want to designate yourself or Andrew or another?
I mean, I can sign. I don't care. You want to sign it real?
When can it be signed? Today?
Uh, probably tomorrow.
Tomorrow? I'm going to New Mexico on Friday. So if there's any delays, I will.
Um, I actually.
It can be signed whenever.
It's gonna be, I'm not gonna come into work tomorrow, but I can come in because I have to drop off papers to get the spot or whatever. So if you want, I can just come in and sign. So, um.
I'll make a motion to have Carol, um, sign for the board.
Seconded. Thank you. Should we vote on that? Do we need to vote on that?
Oh, we need to.
Andrew Shepherd, yes?
Carol Hawkesus, yes.
Robbie, yes.
Thanks, Phil.
Thanks, Carol.
Yeah, that's the, I have to come in anyway, so I'll do that.
Thank you, Carol, for handling that. And next part of our agenda is 3.6. Uh, thank you, Phil. If you want to hang around, you can.
Happy holidays.
Otherwise, you're released.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Um, I think Brett King is here.
He is.
Yes.
No, you can't see him.
Okay, um, Brett, do you want to come to the table and do you have an update for us?
Sure. Um, so.
I'll abstain as, as I've been doing as well. I'll be back.
Um, so we received our ASBILT back, our revised ASBILT back from, um, the chairman and dealists like we spoke about last, um, last meeting. And there is there and we talked about the folks wanted to have the roof drains, the catch basin and the tank to be located on there. Which they are. The, the roof drains are a little different. I mean, he couldn't pick up the roof drains because of course they're buried. So the red line is actually how they actually are. Right, he had them kind of going in like this and they don't. So I, I highlighted it in red and it goes into the catch basin that way. So there's the tank, that's the tight tank for the floor drain in the building. That's the catch basin and they, or the highlighted is the, is the roof drain or roof drain collection system we'll call it. Um, yeah. So that's what you had asked for the, on the ASBILT. We did that in depth. So that's what you had asked for the, on the ASBILT, we did that in Beth's reports. Um, here's all the reports. I, I had to redo some of them, Beth, because they were, I, I did them all on the computer. So I did just redo some of them so they're uniformed. So these are all the monthly stormwater uh, inspection reports.
When was the last inspection?
It was a while ago. Uh, because it's been, you know, I stopped doing them because they were, it's been stabilized for so long. Uh, September eleventh, twenty twenty-two.
Twenty-two?
Twenty-two. I think it's three years. Three years for?
For?
For, well, the length of the permit, right?
Well, the, yeah, the permit, um, expires two years after it's been issued.
Okay.
So it expired, yeah, two years after twenty nineteen.
Twenty nineteen.
It was issued in twenty nineteen. I don't remember what year, but I mean, what month?
I think it was June or July, actually.
September, sounds right.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
You like the drums?
Well, thank you for doing this.
Yep, no worries.
Has anybody reviewed this?
No, yes. Um, Laurie has not seen a copy either.
Well, I would, uh, think he's satisfied what we asked for. Uh, subject to anything that was surfaced in that report. Um, am I off base here or?
I haven't reviewed the materials.
I'm sorry?
None of us have reviewed the material, so.
I, I mean, I'm, you guys can review it. I'll go ahead and come in next meeting after, after it's reviewed. I don't, I don't have a problem with that. It was just given to me not too long ago.
Well, I do remember this.
I would appreciate that. Brett?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, um, where that, where you're just getting it and the board is just getting it, would you want? If we could run for, for January eighth?
Yeah, that's fine.
Is that okay with everybody?
Yeah, did you provide the narrative of the changes from the original approved plans? Do you remember, you asked about a narrative of the changes?
I don't, I didn't have, no, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't have it in my notes. I might have missed that.
Uh, with instructions.
Is it evident on the plan? Is it evident on the plan?
It's evident.
What was, uh, approved and what is built?
Well, no, uh, this, this was a change to the original.
Correct.
All right, and, um, the explanation was more realistic to what was happening on the site. And there was a plan for all of this site drainage around the perimeter of the building that was, um, engineered and proposed and accepted. Then, um, in real world terms, um, there was a more efficient way to do this and, um, and so there were minor modifications to what the engineer had anticipated would be needed. And as a result of that, at the last meeting, we asked him to prepare an updated true story or, you know, ASBILT plan and to have it reviewed by his engineer. And this appears to be what I had requested be done and, um, so we just wanted, in my opinion, something for our record, um, that it had been reviewed and, um, and we didn't, we don't want to be in a position where we're over or altering something that a professional had done. And that was part of the premise of why I asked that he resubmit and um, have the engineer stamp. So we, this is dated December eleventh, two thousand twenty-three and the engineer's stamp is on it. So that confirms to us that he's looked at this and either went there himself or whatever he did, but he certified it. Okay, so that's, I think that was the obstacle for us not going forward earlier, um. Or was it the only one?
I mean, that's all I really had in my notes, that in the um, stormwater inspection, of course.
Right.
Okay, again, I, if it pleases the board, I would like to have everything that Brett has given now available to the full board and Jessica and Beth to review. And then if there's any other questions or notes that have to be done, if we could discuss that on January eighth and, um, and hopefully everybody has a Merry Christmas.
You too.
Yes.
Nobody's looking to delay things for anybody, but right now I realize that I have three minutes to leave. If I leave, you can't do anything anyway because you won't have a quorum since Andrew can't do anything on this deal. So if you don't mind, Brett?
No, no, it's, it's not on long, no worries, no.
Okay. So we'll see you all January eighth. Okay, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Stay safe and healthy, everyone. Thank you.
Just be merry.
I'd like a motion to adjourn, please, at seven twenty-eight P M.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at seven twenty-eight P M.
I second.
Okay. And all those in favor, roll call vote.
Carol Hawkes, yes.
Robert Thering here.
And Laura Schifrin, yes. Thank you, everyone, very much.